To the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is October 23rd at 2025, it's 9:30 in the morning. We'll begin with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dan Zeison? Commissioner Fenter?
Present.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Here.
Commissioner Layton? Chairman Limblum? Vice Chair Millhaven?
Here.
Commissioner Rock Wallach? Commissioner Toma?
Here.
Commissioner Whitney?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed with announcements. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available on the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing at www.mericopa.gov/planning. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the board. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present their testimony. Any witness wishing to give testimony on a particular case shall notify the board of such interest. This shall be done by filling out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or registering desire to comment as noted in the published agenda. Also, at the appropriate time for each case, the chairman will ask those attending in person and online who wish to speak to a case to raise their hand by clicking that icon on the webinar screen. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of the persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of persons who have registered and noted their desire. I just read that part. The chairman will conduct a hybrid in-person and virtual planning hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. The chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. So, first item is acceptance of the minutes of September 25th.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I will move approval of the minutes for September 25th, 2025, as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. I think we just accept the minutes, but that's okay, too. That's okay, too. That's why I went for a second. Okay, so we will move on. The first item, next item is continuance agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Z250003, known as Tonopah Logistics Center in District 4. It's an industrial two IUPD rezonant, 62 acres near Indian School and 411th Avenue. They've requested a continuance to November 6th. No actions necessary by the commission.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, commissioners, this is SU240025, known as Dynamite Water Hauling Truck Depot in District 2. It's a special use permit for a water hauling truck depot on 2.4 acres at the southeast corner of 172nd Street in Rio Verde and the Rio Verde foothills area. The recommendation is for approval. Subject conditions A through L in paragraph 15. Note, you have a handout modifying the language to condition L. The condition had called for a setback of 100 feet from all lot lines. However, if the ultimate right-of-way is acquired along the frontage, that will change that setback below 100 feet. I think it's 94 feet. Practically, that will still be a very significant setback from any properties on the north side of the principal arterial. There are 10 letters of opposition, primarily concerned with dust and traffic. Staff would note that location on Rio Verde Drive is the most optimal location for such a facility to serve this region because it's on a paved arterial. It's well downhill. And currently, the issue is that water service outside the master plan communities, water service to the large lot areas of the Rio Verde foothills is only by hauled-in water. There are three competitive water hauling businesses in the area. This is for Dynamite Water Hauling only. It will centralize most of their trucks in the region into one location, again, on a paved road. The deliveries do occur on all the streets throughout Rio Verde foothills, so the dust from water hauling truck traffic is unavoidable. It's just a fact, a practical fact. I'll note that Dynamite Water has a contract with the U.S. Forest Service. They also fight wild forest fires, wildfires in the area. And this facility will assist in that as well. We've had, and what I failed to mention earlier is currently trucks are either stored, for all the companies are either stored at facilities in industrial depots in the city. They have to drive sometimes 30, 45 minutes to even get to the region. Or they are at individual homeowners' homes where they have a contract to park a truck and/or which could be a zoning violation. Or it's part of a home-based business with the property owner working for one of the water hauling businesses, keeping the truck on site. We believe this is a critical service to the area and will assist in solving some zoning violations in the area as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from commissioners? Great. Having none, would the applicant like to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman up there with the birds, and Vice Chair and Commissioners. For your records, Carolyn Overholzer with the Law Firm of Bergen Frakes, Molly and Overholzer this morning. 4343 East Camelback. Thanks for clearing out the agenda for us today for this case. We've been working on it for a long time. I'm here on behalf of Damon Brunns, who owns the property, retired Phoenix firefighter, and also the owner of Dynamite Water. I want to thank staff for their presentation on the case. I do have some slides that I can supplement it with. If there is any member of the public that speaks on the case, I'd love the opportunity to return to the podium and hit on those. But just to show a few highlights, you know, we are across from Trilogy. As Darren mentioned, we had a very robustly attended neighborhood meeting last December with the community. And once it was understood that this is limited to four trucks and that the current trucks that would be there travel every day 27 miles from the Deer Valley Depot where Damon has his major depot facility, and understood that these are coming and going with only a projected 16 trips a day total out of the site. And again, that this would be conducted entirely within doors. The opposition virtually went away. We've heard nothing but good things since then. Also, in your pocket, you do have a letter of support from the most impacted property owner, which is the one to the south, the ROMs. That support letter's been in there since November of last year. We've been in constant contact with them, coordinated the fencing materials with them. And so you'll also note that there are letters from Royal Metro and the fire community really lauding how Damon runs his business and the critical service they provide, which is essentially they are the fire hydrant for fire service in the area. They show up and park the hauler there so that it can be used to fight fires. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Damon is also here if you have any questions for him, and thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public who wants, wishes to speak? No one here in person? Anyone online who'd like to speak? Oh, there's a gentleman. He needs to, if you could fill out.
Fill out the card?
Well, that's all right. If you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and we can get you to fill out a card if need be.
Chairman, Lady Chairman. My name is Steve Johns. I live at 11424 North 71st Street. And I just am curious if there are any planned improvements to the road immediately to the east.
Go ahead, yes.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. To address the question, so currently there are no physical roads that are county dedicated roads. We are reserving the right-of-way on the west side of the property at 172nd Street. The gentleman's referencing 172nd Place, which is our eastern boundary. And if we can advance the slide, Rachel, to the site plan so we can show the driveway improvements. I think, yeah, that's a good aerial. So we're going to be paving the road into the site on both sides. The ingress to the site is going to happen from the west, and the egress is going to happen from the east.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online who'd like to speak?
Nobody online indicating they'd like to speak.
All right. Commissioners, have any comments or questions? If there are no comments or questions, they'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, for approval for SU240025 with the appropriate amendments of A through L. And that would be a motion for approval.
I second. Thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Fenter and a second from Commissioner Layton. We'll have a vote.
Commissioner Fenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauren?
Yes.
Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Chairman Limblum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Millhaven?
Yes.
Commissioner Rock Wallach?
Yes.
Commissioner Toma?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitney?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item, accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals.
Chair and Commission, this is an ordinance that we're bringing to you in response to legislation, recent legislation by the Arizona Legislature adopting new provisions for affordable, I'm sorry, accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals. The impetus for this legislation was to improve the availability and affordable housing in the community, so they've expanded what jurisdictions can allow for accessory dwelling units in neighborhoods where the zoning permits single-family dwellings. The legislation requires that the county create new standards by the end of this year. And for that reason, we have put this on an emergency schedule. It's going through the emergency ordinance process. It will be in front of the Board of Supervisors at their December 10 meeting. I'll quickly summarize what the ordinance contains. We have a new definition for accessory dwelling unit. Habitable space either attached or detached from an existing principal single-family dwelling of greater square footage than the accessory dwelling unit on a property sharing driveway access with the principal single-family dwelling. We also have a new definition of short-term rental. Our current ordinance actually doesn't even identify short-term rentals as a land use. So we've identified short-term rentals as a single-family dwelling or an accessory dwelling leased without signage for a duration of 30 consecutive days or fewer to individuals other than registered sex offenders. The ordinance that you're considering for your recommendation to the board aligns with some of the language in the legislation. To begin with, any lot or parcel that contains a single-family residence by zoning should, will be allowed to provide for at least one attached ADU, accessory dwelling unit. And this applies to any property that's one acre or less and a detached accessory dwelling unit. Currently, our ordinance allows accessory dwelling units as long, or one accessory dwelling unit as long as it meets our current density and dimensional standards by zoning. So, an accessory dwelling unit or a detached, I'm sorry, an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit is permitted. But there are some stipulations that are attached to these uses. The accessory dwelling units are now permitted by right. There is no requirement for a public hearing process to take through variance or special use permit type of approval. It has to be permitted by right. Shall not exceed the size of the primary residence on a one-acre lot that is 75% or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. It may be leased and occupied as an independent, long-term rental. There's no familial or marital employment relationships that are required as a part of the accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling units are allowed on the lot or parcel, but they may also be located in the side or rear yard similar to other accessory buildings as long as they don't exceed the 30% maximum of those yards area-wise and are set back five feet. They're also limited to a height of 18 feet. If they're located outside or inside the buildable area and not in a rear yard or side yard, then they can be built or constructed at the height of a single-family residential. Also, single access to the street. For anything on a parcel or lot of one acre or greater, there are some similar allowances by the legislation. One attached ADU or one detached ADU. In addition, a second detached ADU is also, must be allowed by our ordinance. Again, some of the requirements or conditions as required for the accessory dwelling units, they are permitted by right. On the case of an acre or greater, they shall not exceed the primary dwelling, but there are no provisions as far as the limitation of the 75% or 1,000 feet. But they cannot exceed the size of the primary dwelling. Maybe leased, occupied, independent, as a long-term rental. Again, no familial, marital employment relationships are required. The same requirements as far as location inside or rear yards. Single access to the street. There is one other provision that applies to anything on a parcel of one acre or greater. The second ADU, detached ADU must be restricted to an affordable unit, which means that it must be available to a household that earns an income that's below the, or 80, up to 80% of the area median income.
Ron, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that verbiage from the legislature?
Yes, it is.
How is that going to be enforced?
That is going to be a challenge. It is going to be a challenge.
If I could jump in, it will be deed restricted, and it will be on the description of the building permit. And so if there's complaints, we will have to have the property owner provide documentation.
Okay.
So in other words, there's no monitoring?
There's no monitoring of this. So I applaud their belief that this will be adhered to, but I, as a Realtor, I can tell you that it's not going to be. So I'm just concerned that now we have two units on an acre or more rather than just one.
We have four.
Well, yeah. Four altogether.
We, if I could, Madam Chair, Commissioners, we've permitted ADUs for 15 years in every zoning district's accessory to a single-family residence. And so we have a long history of that. What's changed now is we have to allow them to be separately rented, and that's by statute. And we have to allow multiple ADUs. We have no, that's a mandate from the state.
Right.
So the third, the second detached ADU in lots greater than an acre, again, the permit will be noted that it's restricted for affordability, and it will have a deed restriction that must be recorded, and that'll be provided to us prior to final. And, you know, if there are complaints about that, which I don't know if we will receive those, all we can do is ask for documentation.
And is the deed restriction going to be on the deed added to the main deed of the main house? Or is this going to be?
It's going to be tied to the parcel, yes.
To the APN itself?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So one final provision in the ordinance. It does address short-term rentals. If an accessory, or if a parcel includes accessory dwelling units, there is an allowance for no more than one ADU to be used as a short-term rental. And there are also stipulations. It's limited to a 30-day period lease. The owner of the short-term rental ADU must reside on the property. The rental has to be rented as a whole unit to a single party or an individual. Only one short-term rental would be permitted for any parcel. And there are some prohibitions which include short-term rentals that would involve events, public assemblies, special gatherings, weddings. There's no signage requirement, retail food service, any commercial enterprise. And a short-term rental cannot be rented to a registered sex offender. And with that, that concludes my presentation. We do have this scheduled for December. Board of Supervisors for their consideration. Again, staff recommends approval of this item that you introduced to the Board of Supervisors based on the intent of providing for available housing and affordable housing in the future.
Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. For staff, I'm going to run a scenario by you that I, with this being the county, there's often large parcels. And I'm primarily honing in on the verbiage in Article Section 501-2, and then we go into 14 and then B. And it talks about size of the ADU, and it says, "No ADU shall exceed the size of the principal dwelling." What happens in the scenario where individual buys, has a property, has a home on it, say it's a 10-acre piece, and they have a 1,500 square foot home, and they choose to build a, they want to build a secondary, let's say they want to, that was their starter house that they now want to convert into an ADU, and they want to build a new home, under this, are they prevented from doing that under this adoption?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Limblum, this is actually fairly common today where someone builds a home as their primary, and then a few years down the road, they're able to build a larger home. So in those instances, the permit description is, includes, you know, an assignment to the existing dwelling as an ADU. So.
Okay, okay. So it's tracked. It works. Okay, that was my only, my only question, so.
Yeah, to add on to that, though, if the new home that's going to be the primary has to be located within the principal building envelope.
Okay, great.
And to anticipate subsequent questions, if property is subsequently split today, both those homes become the primary dwelling on their respective lots, they have to meet a principal building envelope, parts of zoning violation. It's not grandfathered or legally non-conforming because the lot split would negate any legal non-conforming status.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I wasn't getting into a lot split scenario in my mind. I was just trying to foresee what I've seen happen over the years on county islands, so, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Fenter?
I had a few questions, and they might seem pretty simple. Single access to the street, I've heard some feedback on parking. And then the off-site parking prohibition that has been put out there that can't be addressed. Can you give more insight on that from the state?
Yes. Our ordinance today requires one ingress, one egress to any street. And that's what that's getting at. We just have to make sure that that is more proactively enforced at time of building permits, that we don't have people drawing three driveways off the street, you know, one to the accessory, one to the primary, one to the barn. There is opportunity for people to seek variances due to peculiar conditions in those instances. You can also, on the instance of a corner lot, have one ingress, one egress on that second street. So what you end up with is either a single driveway or a single entrance driveway and a single exit driveway, like a couplet. I believe the legislature prohibits us from requiring more parking for the accessory dwellings. So there's still just the requirement for two off-street parking spaces on the parcel for primary, single-family residents regardless of the accessory dwelling units.
Okay. And then pedestrian access? So you can, it doesn't prohibit a gate being put up that people would park on the street and then access the auxiliary unit from a gate?
It does not prohibit, we don't have any prohibition or zoning ordinance regarding, in general, regarding street parking. There's a process in the county to sign streets for no parking, which can, you know, there's a process to go through, and I believe that's through McDot. But that would not necessarily be prohibited in this instance, anywhere in the county.
Okay. And then, Madam Chair, if I can continue. Attached ADU, are there size limitations on the attached portion? So we have for the detached 1,000 square feet. If it's attached to the house, is there limitations?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fenter, it's the same limitation, correct, Ron? It's the same limitation. Based on residential rural zoning, whether you're greater than an acre or less than an acre, there's size limitations. It's the same limitation applies to detached and attached.
And then the 1,000 square feet, is that livable? Or does that include patios and different things? This seems like getting down to the, you know, I know, but I'm just curious.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fenter, those are good questions. It's the entire space assigned to the accessory dwelling unit. Today, we do not, we wouldn't be counting uncovered patios as part of the square footage.
Any other comments or questions?
This is Commissioner Toma. I had a question regarding the 1,000 square feet. Is that a state legislator? Is that a state legislator mandated requirement? Or is that an old county ordinance or is that something new?
Oh, that is, that's the language that we, that's in the legislation.
Commissioner, okay. Anyone else? No other comments or questions? You need a motion to recommend approval?
Madam Chair, I need to correct an error in my presentation. This is actually going to the Board of Supervisors in November. We have two pieces of ordinance, or ordinances that we're working on. So I'm sorry, I got that mixed up. It will be in front of the Board of Supervisors at the November nineteen meeting rather than December.
And effective before the end of the year, to meet the legislation. Gotcha.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Lindblom. I just want to get clarity from staff. We're under, I mean, the county is essentially a legal entity that's set up under the Arizona Constitution and we are created under state law. And this legislation is strictly just getting us in compliance with the legislation. Like, we haven't, I just want to make sure, like, in my mindset, I'm approving under the premise that I'm just approving this to be compliant with state law and technically with the body that governs us and established us. And that's a correct assumption, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Madam Vice Chair?
I will move approval of, is it TA two-five-zero-zero-zero-two as presented.
We have a second. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Whitney and a second by Commissioner Layton.
Commissioner Fenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Layton?
Yes.
Chairman Lindblom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Millhaven?
Yes.
Commissioner Rockwallack?
Yes.
Commissioner Toma?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitney?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other business?
Just two announcements real quick. For the record, we note that Commissioner Rockwallack was here for the entire, for the entire hearing. There was audio issues at the beginning during the attendance, but obviously he was online and you heard his votes. Secondly, we're going to have a very, there's potential that we're going to have a very long hearing next time you meet. And we'll try and bring some water and snacks, but if you want a brown bag of sandwich, it's not a bad idea.
For clarity on that, what's the date on that, what's that date?
November sixth, November sixth.
Which case is going to potentially drag out? It's a BNSF?
Well, all the major CPAs that can only be heard once a year by the board are on that date. And there's the county zoning ordinance update, similar to the last item you heard, but it's the entire ordinance update, biggest thing we've done in a decade. So we're hoping, we're hoping you're all excited by the product. And so there's thirteen items and there could be discussion, there could be public.
Thank you.
Could be quick. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other business, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.